Okay. The meeting to order. Right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm like, what? All those. All right. Mission Kerry, thank you.
I think the link, the public link to view isn't working. I have some people who wanted to listen in. So.
The public link is working because I have a bunch of public in the meeting.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So before we start with public comment, I will just read a brief statement. So the state board's agenda is full and I may place limits on public comment based on the number of members of the public who list who intend to speak. I will give each member five or three minutes, but depending on how many people want to speak, the number of speakers. And that's the amount of time that I will allot to you. And I will ask you to conclude after that time. And the board will move on to the next speaker. The department will not respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. And the department may place a topic raised in public comment on future agenda. A topic from public comment that is not related to an item on today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. Thank you. And I know we have one public comment here. So David, I'm gonna have Katie grieving come up and speak. And then we can go to if there's anyone online, right? Okay. And you can just yes, sit right there.
Okay. Wonderful. I do have a letter that just summarizes my comments. I don't know if I'm allowed to distribute that or not, but it's just a written statement as well.
Oh, yeah. Okay. That's nice.
Just pass that around. Good morning. I'm Katie grieving and I am the executive director of a nonprofit organization, grassroots organization called Decoding Dyslexia Iowa. And I'm here today to talk about something that's pretty important to us and to ask for your help and support. Just to kind of clear a few things up before I start, there are many people in here who I know there's some I don't. Some of you know a lot about dyslexia, but I don't like to make assumptions. So a couple of just quick things to get on the table. Dyslexia is the most common learning disability. The American Academy of Pediatrics estimates that it affects up to 20% of all children. People. It is not a vision problem. There's no seeing backwards in dyslexia. It's a brain difference that makes it hard for people to learn to read. So just wanted to kind of put those facts out on the table so you know where we're coming from. I'm here today to talk with you a little bit about the dyslexia task force and the report that was issued by that group. In 2018, a law was passed with unanimous bipartisan support, which still amazes me. And it established a task force of people to study dyslexia in Iowa to identify problems that were in our system and to make recommendations. And that group of people was I myself, I was in that group. It was stakeholders across Iowa. We met for over a year and by met, we did not meet once a quarter. It was often twice a month, full day meetings. Worked very hard to gather information and put together something meaningful for our state. The task force identified a lot of problems that children with dyslexia and other learning differences are facing in Iowa schools. And not only that, but problems families were having as a result and problems Iowa teachers were having getting training and information. And we put together a list of recommendations for various stakeholder groups, including the Iowa Department of Education. And that report came out in November 2019. And I'm here today to draw your attention to the recommendations to the department and to ask for your help in getting them implemented. I think we're all very aware that something happened in the spring of 2020 that took our focus and is still taking our focus. So I want to acknowledge that we understand that the COVID pandemic had a huge impact and is still having a huge impact on education in Iowa. And I want to give a little grace related to that, that, you know, we understood that some things take the backseat, but it's been over two years. And I'd like to draw your attention to those timelines in that guidance when things were supposed to happen. I personally have not heard anything about any plans or much progress on any of these recommendations. And that's concerning and disturbing to our organization. I have two teenagers at home and I tell them a lot that how we spend our time is a reflection of our priorities. And I would ask the department and the board to devote a little time to this and to let these Iowa families and educators and children, students, all of us who served on the task force that our work mattered and that literacy for children with learning disabilities matters. The good news is that there is a newly established dyslexia board here in Iowa and they are ready to assist and collaborate, as is my organization, Decoding Dyslexia Iowa. We are more than happy to dialogue, to work, to do whatever we can to make this happen. And to be honest, I am ready to make some exciting announcements. I want to tell the people who work with us, look what Iowa is doing, look what the Department of Education has done. I'm, I'm ready for that. So what I'm asking of you today is to take a few minutes and learn a little more about the task force and what was recommended and why? And to work collaboratively, collaboratively with us and the board to make these happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
David, is there any other public comment?
Good morning. If you are interested in addressing the board, I need to use the raise hand feature. And it doesn't look like I have one on the phone. I do have a couple of folks and I'm gonna just do first names because if I try to do last names, it's always bad. Bella. Let me allow you to talk here and there you are.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Bella Benegas. I am a senior at Norwalk High School. And I'm extremely involved in work with the administration and school board at my high school to help fulfill their goals and missions. Some being a sense of belonging and community in our schools. And this is for every student within our school. And so with these missions in mind, there are, there are many things that make it harder for our students to feel like they, they do belong in school or that it is a safe community at school. And so the first thing I'd like to talk about or address today is, is the book banning. And so when, when we talk about how books and literature are looked at in our high school classrooms today, we see that a lot of times the media presents these books to be vulgar or sexual scenes in any, in many ways obscene and not right for our young minds. But in reality, usually they're addressing racism and different LGBTQ plus experiences and, and many times validating the experiences and life that our students are living in high school. One of the things on the agenda today is finding diverse teachers in Iowa. And the mission that Iowa has also set up to kind of reduce the, the, the teaching we can do in these areas makes it harder for teachers to be able to meet these goals when they're prohibited from validating real student experiences. As a queer young woman who happens to also be a person of color, there are many times in schools where I didn't hear my experiences or even just representation of whether it be my ethnicity or a lot of times even just women in our books. It takes a lot to, to hear women authors and, and pieces of work that are about strengthening women. But also I think it was, it wasn't until I was in a freshman or sophomore in high school and, and I was in advanced classes. So this would be like a year ahead than those two. I, I finally read a book about a woman of color. And I finally read a book about the hard experiences that not only women of color, but people of color experience and have experienced in the United States. And so I think that it's really important to, as we look forward into the ways that we want to support our children and our, our communities within the, the state of Iowa, to remember that we want to provide us a sense of belonging and community for each student. And a lot of times the way that these books or teachings are kind of exaggerated in the media or by different, underneath different political ideologies. In reality, it helps us feel safe at school and it helps us remember that there are others like us. And yeah, so thank you for listening to me today.
Yeah.
Ask one more time if anybody would like to make comment, use the raise hand feature. And there is no one else in my computer. Wait, I have a last minute one. Ashlyn. You may go ahead. You are on mute currently.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
All right. Hi, my name is Ashlyn Busmas. I go to Norwalk High School and I'm a senior. I'm very involved in educational equity advocacy, including a statewide student voice organization as well as a nationwide student voice organization. I'm also involved in Iowa Youth Congress and Emma Page. I'm also my school's student council president and, and am a co-founder of a DEI group at my school. I see many issues with numerous of the legislative priorities set forth this year by the education board. For starters, I would like to address the proposed 2.5% increase in funding. Our country is seeing an all time high in inflation of 7%, the highest it has been since 1982. Not only are we not meeting sufficient fun, funding, but we are reallocating the few funds that we are providing for public schools to private schools. Additionally, by implementing this private school idea, we can prevent private schools from admitting, or private schools can prevent students from admitting students based off of previous disciplinary action grades or even special education needs. This is inequitable. But if our state wants to set competitive funding, setting it, setting an increase in funding that matches the current inflation rate and spending on public fundings on schools and only public schools is the only way to go about that. Our state deserves more and our youth deserves more. Additionally, I take tremendous issue with the education choice and transparency portion of the legislative priorities section of this document. This board has set forth a goal of not only retaining teachers, but seeking out a more diverse and inclusive teacher workforce. This more diverse and inclusive teacher workforce is not only important for the teachers, but for the students that feel unrepresented in their schools. Students in schools are the largest stakeholders. Their voices should never be outweighed by that of their parents. Parents can know what is in the library, sure, but that becomes a very slippery slope with centering what students can and cannot read because that's what it is. It's censorship. What they can and cannot learn, we cannot, or what they can and cannot learn. We cannot be a state that denies students access to learning materials that will help them develop into independent and educated individuals. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have no others and just to give you a heads up, I'm about to lose my computer, which this will be the second computer I'm about to lose to a restart as well. So just wanted to give you that heads up that'll be dropping out and I will be back and the recording will not be affected. My apologies.
Thank you. All right. Let's say your session update.
Eric, if you had a chance to introduce yourself to this board in this role.
Not in this role.
Okay. So Eric Sinclair is filling in as our interim legislative liaison. We are very excited to have him serving in this role and he will be providing the update to the board today. Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is the end of the second week of session. There is already a lot to cover. They, the last two years have been going pretty quick and not waiting to start the official the legislature. So, you know, week one kind of the capstone of the week was the governor's condition of the state address. I'm sure you all are familiar with that by now, what the highlights of that were, but there were education, there were several, several related education related topics that were, that were introduced and around attracting and retaining teachers, promoting work-based learning, educational choice and transparency and increasing support for education across the board, K-12 community colleges and regions institutions. There were several bills that were already introduced last week. This week though, is when everything really picked up pace with scheduling subcommittees, committee meetings and all that. Already there was three bills on the Senate side that were already out of committee, which is, which is pretty quick. The Senate Study Bill 3005, which is related to physical examinations administered by school districts. Senate Study Bill 30, 3004, which is related to immunizations and the authority to require certain immunizations being reserved exclusively for the state board of health. And then Senate Study Bill 3002 around the computer science professional development incentive fund and allowing those funds to be extended for a couple of months beyond the fiscal year with, and which they were awarded. So again, those can, three bills had a subcommittee, they're already out of the Senate Education Committee and they are eligible for debate. So they are moving again, very quickly this year on some of these topics. Teacher shortage in general, there's been a lot of bills related to that focusing on teacher prep licensure, testing requirements, a very big topic. And of course, this also ties into the new teacher registered apprenticeship program that was introduced or highlighted in the governor's speech last week. There's already information on our webpage about that as well. So a lot will be happening in that area. We're also seeing legislation in line with some topics that were introduced last year. There's several around gender identity and sexual orientation related to instructional materials and the use of school facilities. Immunizations and COVID testing is, there's several bills related to that. So we will be seeing and monitoring a lot of that legislation as well. We have a tracking document that we are obtaining. That information is available on our website. And of course, we are continuing to do the weekly newsletters, legislative newsletters and the weekly legislative updates for our staff in-house as well. So just looking at my notes. I think that covers it. Oh, and there's one about cursive instruction. Can't forget about cursive instruction. So I yeah. That one, the, the subcommittee keeps on getting reassigned, but I just hope no one would look at my notes while doing that one because my English teacher would have a heart attack if she looked at it.
That is hilarious.
So if you have any questions throughout the session, please feel free to contact me. I'll do my best to coordinate a response, but yeah, that's it for now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I, I do want to add, in addition to Eric, Larry Bice, Kimberly Vellati and Cassandra Klein have been helping out as well. I was able to attend the meeting with them yesterday and they're just doing a tremendous job and we appreciate all of the, the time they're putting into this. It's a lot. It comes quickly and it's just quick turnaround. The expertise of our staff is, is impressive and we're really appreciative of their, of their efforts. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question really quick. So as far as like, has the department set their educational priorities yet for this year?
So yes, there is one department pre-file bill out there. It's basically amounts to code correction. Other than that, what was highlighted in the governor's speech, we'll be monitoring and, and seeing how that unfolds as well.
Yeah. So I think we went over those at, was it December or November, November, one of the meetings before.
Okay.
Sorry. I didn't mean to.
No, I just thought that the educational choice and transparency one, one that I'd just love to get more updates about and look specifically at what the department is doing related to that. I just want to emphasize that I think statewide right now, there's a pretty big movement for parent voice. And as, although I think it's really important that parents are involved in their kids' education, that student voice shouldn't be pushed aside because of it. And that student should still be the main stakeholders in their education. And so I'm hoping that the department sees this as a priority in the legislative session, making sure that students are the one who get to determine their own educational path. Parents are aware of what's happening curriculum.
And, and, and to clarify again, sort of the distinction with the, the board's priorities, the department's priorities and legislative ass, no, these are bills that are not led by the department. And so our role is providing information and follow-up as those are presented, but appreciate your comments on that.
And if they do ask for information on those bills, I'd encourage the department to find a way to make the voices of students heard if they ask for information on the effect that, and impact that these bills would have.
So information for bills are shared at subcommittees. To what extent public input involvement is, is open to students? I think that's something that is always available to them, but that's when comments would be heard.
Okay.
And those would all be, are they in our tracker or are they separate? So like when subcommittees pop up, it's probably not in the one that we share. You may want to
Look it on the legislative.
Yep. If you follow, see where they are.
That's probably the best way.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks Eric.
Thank you.
All right. Director's report. Okay. One other introduction, and I realize she has not had a chance to formally meet the board is our attorney too, Rachel Bosavich. So I'm going to give her a chance to actually introduce herself to all of you, meet her today.
Very nice to meet you all. I've been with the department a little over three months now. And in my position as attorney to, I'll be handling matters primarily related to special education and school improvement. Prior to joining the department, I had quite a bit of experience working in special education classrooms and found my passion for it through that work. And then worked in the children's rights clinic while I went to law school as a student attorney. And then went into private practice in family law for a couple of years before joining the department. So I'm excited to join and hopefully bring those experiences with me.
Thanks for that. And we were thrilled to have her, as is Thomas, who now is not finally doing two jobs for the past long time.
Sure. You're one of my students, aren't you?
Yes. Wow. Happy to see you here. Congratulations on the job.
I'm sorry. Okay. Another thing you'll all notice for those who are in the room and for those who are joining remotely, well, you will get those later. A small token of our appreciation to the board members are the, are they pad folios? Is that the actual name of that?
I love it.
That's available to all of you. It has seal embossed on the front. I know it's small, but it is, you know, something we can really share that just for, in honor of your time. We know this is a lot. This is not a paid position and you do really important work. So we appreciate all of your service and please accept this small token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Yes. To, to extend on some of the comments that were already made for some of the governor's priorities and the initiatives as they cross over into some of the work we are going to do, Larry's going to talk about this a little bit more when he talks about the teacher task force, but the registered apprenticeship that the governor launched quite quickly came from the work of that group. That will be jointly funded through the department and IWD since it would be overseen by the Department of Labor. But this is the first in the nation of this kind of work. You would have received information about this in your weekly update. The press release was shared and I'm happy to share that again, but just know that this is a joint effort. That's where it came from. We're very excited about the opportunities and the feedback from the field that was used to help guide this pathway and what this could potentially do for the future of education. That has come up as Eric mentioned in some of the subcommittees related to shortage areas. So there's, there's, there's short-term solutions, there's long-term solutions. We're trying to blend what we can, use the resources we have now to make the longest sustaining difference. And this is one of those opportunities. Another one that was mentioned that you will get more information on when it is final is the retention bonuses for educators. We will be partnering with that. Once we have final information on that for you, we'll make sure to share this with the board as we issue that publicly as well. But just you're aware that we were involved in that piece as well. I also have another just reminder to as, as bills move quickly, information changes rapidly. Please make sure you're checking your emails. Please make sure you're reading those weekly updates. As you go through that information, have questions, reach out directly to Eric on any legislative questions you might have for specific bills. But it will be important to be timely on this. Our meetings as spaced out as they are probably won't be enough to give you updates on that. So in the meantime, if you have questions, we're going to give you as much information as we can, but please reach out if you need more. A brief update on relief dollars, and this is a little tiny, but I just want you to be able to see it. This is our, it's a little slightly changed version of the funds than you've seen before, but the basic premise, just want you to be able to see, this is the current update as of the end of December on costs that have been submitted to the department for reimbursement. So it is a very small picture of a limited period of time because we, we collect these quarterly. Districts may already have it encumbered. Districts may already have started services, but they haven't submitted the receipt to us yet. They may say we're out of the money, but we're showing that it's all still there. It's simply because we, we haven't, it hasn't come to us yet for processing. What I want you to see also is the parts that are broken down by state projects and our, our portions of those funds initiatives such as the apprenticeship and the teacher bonuses are not reflected in that. But we are beginning to reach a point now where funds are being encumbered in a way that there, there will be, those will be exhausted. And so I'll make sure you're updated on that. I just want you to kind of see how we're breaking down the information and just a reminder of the amount of funds that have gone into the system to address education. So it just looks a little bit different because we've changed a little bit how we track it internally, but wanted to provide that to you as well. At every meeting, you won't necessarily see a change because it just depends on how those receipt comes in, but this would be our most updated based on the information that we have.
So if the department has not spent the money allocated by the due date, does it revert back to federal every month or how does that work?
It will be spent. But yes.
In charge.
Yes. Yes. But yes, it would.
That's kind of the same thing the state does, the school district. It's not spent, it comes back.
Yes. Okay. So you're welcome. You, you can keep that as well. There was an ask to talk about the, the teacher task force report. And again, Larry will have more information on that in, in his presentation. He's done a tremendous job with that work, but I'll save that for him. I know there was an ask for specific data regarding the kind of the lasting challenges of COVID. I think there's some information later on sort of some student performance data, but that's, that's a multi-pronged question. And so as we look at the impact on learning, we look at the impact on, on the systems. We will continue to update you on each of those portions, but it might look a little bit different depending on what we're evaluating it from. We have seen some positive indicators of our students' learning performances even throughout the pandemic, and that has been positive, understanding that there's other challenges that are in place now. A lot of focus will be spent on, on how we address staffing issues and what ability we have to make some of those changes. But again, most of that is legislatively needed in order to correct some things. A lot of the conversations are around requirements for licensure or barriers on service. There have been some conversations with extension of IPRs that had happened previously so that individuals could, can, can substitute at different times. So all the short-term solutions, while we work more broadly on those long-term recommendations, I'm going to let Larry talk about a little bit more in depth. And that we do continue to have our monthly superintendent conversations and Q and A sessions with the field. Those are on separate weeks. I think at our last meeting, there was well over 100. It was very well received. And so those have been positive. Again, it's just an opportunity to engage with as many stakeholders as we can on a regular basis to help listen to their needs and help provide solutions for those as well. And that is all I have, unless you have other questions for me.
And I have, I have a question.
Yeah.
So I was just thinking about the teacher apprenticeships. Right now, do you have numbers statewide of how many teachers that we are short?
Larry has some information and that's, that's kind of a tricky question. What do you mean by how we're short? So
Or openings, I guess.
Well, yep. And I think that is in, I think that's in the information he's going to provide and it's, but it's, it's a little, it's not really clear because some of the openings are based on next year and it's all compiled in one system. So he can break that down. But the other part of that too, is a lot of teachers that are serving in current positions are doing so on a very different type of licensure. So do we consider that really being served by a full-time teacher? The Board of Educational Examiners has better data on that, but Larry has some of that that he'll share today. So it's a, is there someone there to do the job right now? Yes. Does it look the same as it did a couple of years ago? No. And so once we have a better understanding of what that will look like going into the next year, you know, you have to be really clear on the problem you're trying to solve. And there's, there's sort of several different ones. And there's, there's sort of several different ones. And so hopefully, depending on how things go this year, we'll have some better solutions for some of those unique problems.
And in the apprenticeships, were they targeting maybe specific teacher shortage areas or is it just any area?
That's really more for just the pathway and the pipeline and how we can simplify that process. And then what we learn from this, maybe it will help us change some things more substantively as we go forward. So again, Larry has some, may have some better answers for you on that. But I don't think it's a specific area because right now, if you ask most educators, I would, they would say every area is a shortage area.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Are they addressing the issues? Like, I mean, I understand the pipeline, but that's kind of seems like it's a couple of years down the road, right? I mean, if you're looking at high schoolers or people who may be entering school right now. But what about retention? Because I hear that's a huge problem with teachers kind of entering the workforce and then maybe working a year or three years and then, and then leaving to go do another career or something like that. So what about just kind of retention, retention of the teachers? I mean, if they're leaving, then that's not really going to help if you get them in there.
And, and some of those, I think are, there's kind of two parts to that as well, depending on which piece is the obstacle. One thing that, that, and this will be Larry's report too, that is a piece we're sort of tasked with doing is a survey of the field on why they're leaving. One piece of it that they are kind of looking at it on a high level is the barriers that might be in place for staying in, whether those are assessment requirements, renewal requirements, licensure area or things like that that could be removed, that may potentially change some of that. And the others are those more nuanced questions of, of the experiences in the field that we want to get better data from our individuals to identify what problem in that area can we solve? And then there, you know, salary is another piece as well, and I think it's a different part of the conversation also.
Okay.
But that is all part of what's being asked for us to evaluate from that, from that group.
Retention meaning that we're leaving the field completely, not just switching from one school district to another.
Right. Which are two different questions too. Or, or you know, you're serving in a different, you've been asked to serve in this different role, which is maybe the one you want to. Or maybe this school isn't the best fit for you. Those are different questions also that would need to be addressed as part of this as well.
Okay.
Talking to some of my fellow comrades, it sounds like there could be a shortage coming in leadership positions.
I've heard that also. Some people retiring or people just not wanting to go into them or?
Oh, well, leaving.
Leaving.
Either on time or way ahead of time.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right. So now move to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
The move, is there a second? It's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Great rules. Chapter 12. Hey, Thomas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm chair members of the board. Just a quick note about the rulemaking process. You notice that there's a notice of intended action on your consent agenda. Trying to move technical corrections or things that really the board has no choice about onto consent agenda. Trying to preserve your agenda time for the discussions that the director's report just prompted. So you'll probably see more rulemaking, the consent agenda. So chapter 12, general accreditation standards. This responds to last legislative session. It does a couple of things. First of all, there were a couple of bills regarding physical education requirements, one of which was prompted by the legislative pages themselves. They were asked to write a bill and Senator Smith from Scott County sponsored that bill and brought it forward. And it eventually passed so that a participant in the legislative page program will get a social studies credit as well as be excused from PE during the term of the page program. The feedback from legislative pages who don't live in the metro areas, they were having to go home on Friday and walk halls or do early bird PE because their school would not excuse them from, from PE. So they took matters into their own hands, found a, a champion in Senator Smith. And that bill is now, was signed by Governor Reynolds. The second is related, a related matter. Students who are enrolled in junior ROTC. There was a, even though there is a great deal of physical education, physical fitness standards embedded in the, the service branches, operation manuals for JROTC. One high school would not release students from PE to participate in JROTC. And that one high school, there was a student who got a hold of, I believe, her legislature and now we have a law. So problem solved. So two examples of student advocacy. And then the third piece is a comprehensive rewrite of the general accreditation standards, school, you know, lessons learned from Davenport. Consolidation of lessons learned from Hamburg and Farragut. As consolidation of this board's lived experience with some school districts that needed, needed various degrees of carrot and stick to meet minimum standards. This legislation, which the department proposes codifying in rule, also folds in some obligations and responsibilities under federal law and codifies some of the tools available to the department and to this board under federal law to make sure that federal requirements are met. As to that final piece, my unindicted co-conspirators, Amy Williamson and Janel Brandhorst are here to ask any, answer any technical questions that I, or substantive questions that I cannot. But with that, the department recommends to the board that it gives notice of intended action to amend chapter 12. I'm now open for questions. As are Amy and Janelle.
I have a question. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find the exact part of that that I want. For some of these revived for school seeking flexibility in general accreditation standards, does that relate to charter schools?
That relates to any school, any school or school district that wants to propose, it's, it's a replacement of the old waiver process. So if a school wants to try something innovative or flexible, it can come to the department to see that request. As part of that, data would be gathered to show the efficacy of the request for flexibility. There is additional funding through a rule that this department or this board approved and has been adopted regarding a flexibility account. It does not apply solely to charter schools. It would apply to any school that wants to price them, see if it, see if it garners positive results.
Okay. And you mentioned Davenport as I was reading, I thought, well, didn't we kind of follow that rule when we were Davenport? Is this just kind of more specifically putting it into rules that may or may not have been very specific as it related to when we went through the Davenport process? Is that, is that what this is doing?
It, it, it makes it more concrete. So the legislation sort of drew from Davenport's, this board's experience with Davenport, making things more concrete. There's some questions, there were some questions in the Davenport process. Can the department do this? Can the department, can the board do this? They were inferred, this makes this more concrete.
Okay. I would, so no more questions. I would move that we give notice to amend the rules in chapter 12.
It's been moved, is there a second?
One second.
Second.
There's two seconds? All those in favor say aye.
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 Right, opposed? Motion carries.
Next. Notice of intended action before you is to add E related to open enrollment. Currently, there are a couple of exceptions to the March 1 deadline that this board hears, appeals from. You may or may not hear an appeal from that next agenda item, but pervasive harassment or serious health condition. In the last legislative session, the open enrollment statute was amended to add a third exception for that, to that March 1 deadline. And that is a resident district that consistently fails to respond to a student's failure to meet basic academic standards after notice from the parent. And the board was, the department and board were charged in that legislation with making, adopting standards for what that looked like. And those standards are before you today. And it breaks the the legislation, the legislative language down into three parts. The first part is what does it mean to be, what are basic academic standards? And those include the academic standards for English, language arts, mathematics, science and social studies. There are lots of academic standards, but when we were crafting this rule, we drew in sort of meaning from the word basic. So I'm struggling in art, I'm struggling in a CTE program, I'm struggling in, like, I'm struggling in PE, all of which are important. But there had to be some bumper guards around that guardrails. And so from the word basic, my content area colleagues recommend to this board, sort of capping that off, English, language arts, math, science and social studies. The next prong is evidence of failure to meet basic academic standards. So we've got the academic standards, so what does it mean to fail those? Not meeting benchmarks and universal screeners, falling behind on progress measurement, not achieving proficiency and standard based outcome assessments. The Iowa, the ISASP or other related instruments in receiving a letter grade of a D or F in one of those basic courses. And then the third.
Excuse me. Do they have to meet all of those?
Those are, that is evidence of, like, if I'm passing, but I'm getting like, you know, a, you know, C for diploma, like I, I haven't stabbed a teacher, so I'm guaranteed at least a C minus. But I'm struggling with my IO assessment. That's evidence of a failure to make basic academic progress. Like I'm, I'm getting socially promoted.
Okay.
It, it's not an all, it's a, it's water in the ice cream tray.
Okay.
Tom's back with a, is the expectations at their meeting, all the standards in those areas? I mean, I'm, I'm going to apply for open enrollment to have to show I'm not being served in English, language arts, math, science and social studies, all, all of those subject areas.
I think that that's something for public, I think that's something for public comment. The intent would be like, if I'm really struggling and the, and I've called that to the district's attention, you're like math. I'm really struggling in math. My mom is involved, my mom's not, she's called to the, called the question with the district and the district fails to respond to my lack of progress in math. The intent is one or it could be more than one.
So then the, the last part should be, or social studies, instead of and social studies.
I think we can play with that in public comment to make, to make that, to make that intent clear. The, reading them, the temperature in the subcommittee room when this legislation was being brought forward, it was not an intent for like complete failure. Yes.
I, I have a couple of questions. What does, we have item one, adopt the following new subrule, which is currently reserved.
That means that there's a holding spot for it in the rules. So when this board revised open enrollment rules in light of this legislation, these standards weren't ready to, the toothpick wasn't, hadn't come out clean. They weren't ready to come before you. So we held a spot, we reserved this subrule so that what, you know, it's codes, it's code editor speak. It will, it basically tells the code editor where to put this in the currently, the currently adopted rule.
Do we have statistics that show us, for example, what percent of current students, or even if you want to look at pre pandemic students, don't meet these benchmarks, don't achieve proficiency, proficiency on the standardized based assessments? Or do we have any idea of how many students are receiving Ds and Fs? Information available?
That information is available. It's not, it's not in my head right now.
Okay.
Other folks in the room can provide that to you. It's kind of higher than, my heart tells me, like, my cardiovascular data tells me that it's higher than we would expect. I've heard numbers before and Amy and Janelle can, and Brad can correct me if I'm wrong, but third grade reading performance, to take one example, is not, has, this board's been briefed on that before.
Yeah, that, I guess that's part of my concern because we've looked at proficiency. And in some areas, it's been fairly low. So are we talking about massive number of students who say this school district didn't make me proficient, therefore I'm?
That's, that's not, that's not the complete standard though. The complete standard is I have to, the school district had to have failed to respond. And so that's where it's the, you know, this is kind of hypothesis testing on a macro level. Is, is the lack of proficiency because the schools aren't doing reasonable things, aren't doing anything? Or is the lack of proficiency because we've tried effective things? We've tried reasonable things in this particular classroom. Mr. Mase has tried reasonable things with his sort of graders, just haven't found the right reasonable thing yet versus Mr. Mase just shows YouTube clips all day.
So kind of a follow up question. Our students aren't as proficient as we would like them to be. And yet, we've talked about this for years. So what additional resources would be available to a school district or to a student who hasn't reached proficiency? I, I'm assuming we try to do that now. But if this is requiring more action, where are the resources for faculty and or the school districts to do this?
I'm going to answer first. The, the issue really is the resources are already there. The hypothesis that this test, it's that they're not being deployed, that the school is not reasonably responding in this particular child's instance, that the child is not receiving standards based instruction, evidence based interventions that the department supports, that the department identifies. You know, the things that would be expected of reasonable classroom teachers of monitoring progress, measuring progress over time, making changes to instruction when progress has not been made versus, you know, goal not attained, repeat goal, not providing evidence based interventions. I've got this evidence based intervention that I could use, but I'm going to do something else. So the, the hypothesis that's being tested on the macro level is there are resources available. And in this particular student's case, they weren't reasonably deployed after parent notice.
And so.
And so eight, and I interrupted Amy.
No, I interrupted you. I was going to say the same thing though, is that these resources have been made available by the department and every AA in the state since about 2013. And we've added to the pool of resources available all these years. The question is, are you using them? And if you're not, then this is a.
This is, this pairs a carrot with a stick. I mean, it's.
So then what happens then?
Who will determine that the school is not making the reasonable efforts?
Ultimately, that might become, come before you in a contested case, but the first instance would be, would be the school boards. Yeah. Because it is an open enrollment request that both school boards need to act on. And, you know, it will come before you with some standards set forth in, in rule versus, we, we've had this discussion with other open enrollment appeals. Like here are standards that are made by case law, made by your prior decisions. This would be different in that they're first standards codified in rule that the legislature and Governor Reynolds required to be codified.
So would this first be determined at the resident board level? Determined at the resident board level before it goes to the receiving board level.
Both boards have to act, the resident. First.
And so the resume board says, we're doing right by this student. Based on the evidence, that's when it can be appealed to the state board.
Right. And the parent would have to prove that the district was not, that the burden of proof would be on the parent to show that. The district did not meet these standards, or they did the things, they didn't do the things that this rule would require. Or they did the things that this rule would indict.
I understand the content or the, the purpose behind this. Legislation as far as if the student is not being served correctly, they should have a way to. To move to a different school and I don't, I don't disagree with that. The parent and student's responsibility in this is. I'm assuming a good faith effort to get their child to school. To, for the student to be, uh, giving his or her best effort on, on this. On these interventions. Well. Not doing well, I'm out of here type of thing.
The interventions are required to, like, the district is required to deploy them. But they, they're tested against the standard of reasonable and it's not perfection. Well, I tried to do this reasonable thing, but the student was absent because of a health condition. I tried to do this thing, but the student was, there was a whole bunch of snow days because we live in Iowa. Uh, we tried reasonable things, we, we tried reasonable things, we put. A reasonable finger quotes offer on the table, which was not accepted. I think that that certainly would be a factor in whether or not the school acted reasonably responded to a parent request.
I know for, for harassing the deadlines, March first, is there a deadline for this?
It's an exception in the March one deadline.
Okay, so it could come anytime.
Come anytime.
So what happens to the, um, school district if they? Um, so we're saying that if they don't respond to this. Students need, then the student has an option, if it's past the open enrollment deadline to. Open enroll out of this school district. And so what happens to that school district if they're just not deploying MTSS? Or if they're not doing what they should be doing? Is there anything that happens? And are we keeping track of instances when this is used? So I feel like that's a problem if they're just not doing anything. And if a student's having to leave a school district because they've. They, or their parents have repeatedly asked for help and they're not getting that, so.
And I think that that's where the two rules that, two of the rules that you acted on would sort of turbocharge each other. If a school, if open enrollment is granted late because. Of failure to consistent, to respond to consistent failure to meet academic. Academics, basic academic standards that have, that could possibly cycle in and be a data point under the chapter twelve rules that you just gave notice of.
Going back to my question, so on June first, after all the, the grades and testing reports are in that. It's not happy, they couldn't file for open enrollment for the coming school year.
But they would have had to notice. That their child is failing them. Me basically, parent notice first. If there was no parent notice and I just filed for open enrollment, that would be sort of a, a proof problem for the parent.
Okay, so one does that, notice, parent notice have to go to the school district?
I think it's facts and circumstances because it's the reasonableness of the interventions that the, that the district is applying, so. My child's not reading. I tell the school my child's not reading. My unique and beautiful. Snowflake is not reading. And the school responds, well, this is the type of intervention that we would deploy. It would take roughly. You know, we should know in X number of days or X number of data points, whether or not it's successful. I think. If a parent. Pulled the trigger too early, that certainly is a factor in whether or not the school did or did not reasonably respond. Any, any additional thoughts on that?
I was gonna respond to the question that Brooke asked. Because what you cited about the, uh, chapter twelve rule is absolutely correct. And in addition to that, though, um, part of what we do for. It's monitoring, but it's like a softer monitoring because we don't cite people, we provide help relentlessly. Through differentiated accountability. And, but we've had a hiatus from that because of the pandemic for. So long that a lot of board members probably don't even know about it, you know, um. And so one of the things that we do routinely when we're not in a pandemic is we do. Sight witnesses that are necessary for those in, in the greatest need of help. Um, and then, you know, uh, they're targeted, um, sort of desk audits, then we, um, desk audits with everybody annually. But, um, if we see, well, you're not using an MTSS, you're not deploying the resources, you know. Then we kind of don't go away. Until, until you start deploying resources. And so I would, I think what we'll find is there's a correlation between. You're kind of, you're kind of on that list where we show up all the time. And then you might end up with the appeals for. Or not appeals, but the applications for open enrollment out because you're not.
Cause it kind of sounds, it sounds like a Davenport, it could be like a Davenport situation, right? Where they're not meeting and, and parents are maybe saying like, hey. What are you doing? You're not doing these things.
You're in need of this intensive assistance. You might have knock compliance issues. That bring you for the state board. And then you would also have people who want to leave because they're not having. So, but in the past, we have seen. All of those things kind of come together.
And one final, the, there's the big issue of a district not implementing or deploying the MTSS at all. This rule also contemplates not it, deploying it for an individual child, like. Why is this child, uh, in the chair at the back of the room, watching YouTube clips? Because why they're, they're. The rule is agnostic as to why, but it would provide parents relief.
And that rule, that way this rule can catch places where, wow, things look pretty good, except there's. Some students for whom things aren't so great.
So just to follow up on John's question. So. As often happens, parents are the last to know. So at the end of spring semester. Student gets a math. And so then they request open enrollment. What if the school district says, well, we recognize that we didn't do this, but. We will provide remedial work in the summer or the next fall, and therefore we will not. Uh, agree to this student going to another school district. How is, how is that taken care of?
A statutory prerequisite is after notice by the parent. If a school district sort of withholds information to delay that notice period, I think that that might be something that would be argued on appeal. If I'm not getting appropriate notices apparent, that certainly could be something that would. Even if open enrollment is denied, it's something that could be cycled back into the chapter twelve rules. And that's. The, the statute contemplates and requires parent notice to, to activate the parent rights under this.
So the, but is the parent notice when they re, get the report card at the end of the semester that their stu, their child is flunked? Is that be that requirement? I haven't had kids in school for a long time, but I don't know that. Do schools notify every parent that halfway through spring semester? Their child is flunking?
There's, usually there's like an online platform that parents can access that shows their updated grades in real time. So they put in like, you can click through it, like our school uses infinite campus. Parents have access to it, students have access to it. You can see your grade book updates, which show your scores and the exams that you're taking right now. And you can see your grade, your total grades in each of the courses. And so. They wouldn't like the final, like, parents get email notifications when those grade book updates happen. You often see like students getting texts from the parents like, hey, what's up with this grade? For parents who take more of a hands off approach, the students are able to manage that themselves. So. Like, it's not like being sent in the mail. It's something that students and parents can always access if they want to. And I think most parents usually. Are aware of how to do that because they have to pay for school fees through that portal.
You think most parents are accessing that and.
And my school with the group that I interact with, most parents do, but I don't know if that's fully representative of most. Students and families. I don't think that it might be.
And then one other quick question. So. If this happens, the only consequence to the school is basically they lose the revenue for the. Child that's leaving their district.
The following year.
The following year and.
Not the coming or the year after.
And the only. Penalty for teachers not doing this is just. Something they do internally to deal with the issues that were raised, is that?
I question their premise, um, because the only penalty under this rule chapter. There are, um, other, um, mechanisms for teachers that fail to do progress measurement. Uh, I believe our department director might be familiar with those from a prior life. And, you know, the accountability under chapter twelve, uh, the employment relationship between the classroom teacher. And per his employer. So I think that they, this rule is intended to be like a child specific, parent specific safety valve. But the things that trigger the safety valve could trigger a whole bunch of other consequences, a whole bunch of other, uh, opportunities for growth. But this is, this is designed like the other two open enrollment. Uh, matters that this board hears to be a safety valve in a specific case and then. Let the broader root cause be addressed through other mechanisms.
But this is only, and it, it only adds to the exceptions after the March first deadline. So I mean, a person could, a parent could open and roll their child at any point up until March first for any reason. So there might be people opening, rolling for this reason, but you wouldn't even know it, right?
Because they do it timely.
So with going back with the parent notices or. Expectation for that or a template for that is like, well, I told you as on the phone that. My kid's not doing well, that was good enough, or is there something in writing or how does this all work so that there's clear communication that? What constitutes a parent notice?
It's gonna depend on the facts. The statute did not use the word written. Uh, which the statute, which the legislature has used before in notice requirements. So. It could be a phone, it could be a phone call that would trigger this obligation. It would be a proof problem for the parent if it wasn't in writing and the school did not sort of concede that they received this phone call. Uh, a finder of fact would have to find that the parent was credible. You know, if the legislature had used written notice, it would have been easier, certain, written is certainly encouraged. Um, there's mechanisms to do that written notice through, uh, the portal. Uh, through a lot of the student management systems, but. What is written, what is notice will depend on the, sort of the facts assembled in each case.
I'm just trying to be a little proactive, I think. Really squig, squishy, it's gonna be.
You know, I would defer to the, uh. Folks who draft the open enrollment handbook for the department to say, you know, parents, if you are. If you are thinking of going down this route. What is the evidence, you know, put your evidence together. You, we're, you're encouraged, but not required to do it in writing.
Right. I mean, Thomas, this is Brian Kane, uh, uh, isn't the. I mean, this, this sounds like one F is certainly not enough. I mean, this, this has to be a consistent failure. To respond after notice that's late filed. And then it looks like when you look at C. That on page three, that it's. That it's, you know, growth over time and doesn't show progress. I mean, I, I think this is an incredibly high standard. And frankly, I doubt that any resident school district is gonna admit that they're failing to. Provide. Student needs to, to achieve basic academic standard requirements. But so this is, I mean, isn't the evidence gonna have to be the long term failure? And, and that, that isn't defined.
So can, uh. Consistent is not, is not defined, but again, it would be sort of the. The gravity or the facts and circumstances of each case. If I'm a child who is just like one point. Under, uh, like the standards for you, the universal screener. Versus I'm twenty points, I'm one point over multiple screening windows versus I'm. One point and then twenty points, I'm heading in the wrong direction. I, I think again, consistency. The degree of consistency or the length of time is gonna vary by the facts. Because what consistent would look like for an elementary school, like early childhood? Early elementary, middle school, high school, it's gonna, it's gonna look different. Maybe. I'm just envisioning my own personal life. The D I got, the D, um, in high school. Uh, were at no, none of that D could be attributed to Davenport North High School. I earn that, I earn those Ds completely, my own. If my parents were foolish enough to believe that it was Davenport North High School's fault, they couldn't show this because it was, I mean, at, at some point. The Ds or the Fs are like, you know. Life choices, hard life lessons for the student rather than something attributable to the, to the classroom teacher.
And I think like the reality is like walking into a high school, I think a lot of parents understand like. Like how, what that relationship between the teachers and the students looks like. And I. I just, I, I mean, it could be abused, but I think that a lot of parents in the first place often doubt what their students say. And don't even take that at face level first. So I think that in order for this to be involved and for them to do it on a late notice. I think it might, it might take quite a bit. On that student's end. So I mean, I know that this is what, it's trying to catch certain. Areas of discrimination against different students within the school. Uh, if, if that's the intent of it, I don't know if it will do it effectively, but I also think that if you guys are worried about this. This code being abused and having too many open enrollment cases coming before this board. I think the reality of it is, it may not happen.
Yeah, that may, that may be, but I just know the more clear something is, the less. So when I'm, I'm, I'm in favor and I'll make a motion to, to approve that hearing, when it's called. So we can move on, but the more clearer it can be defined, the less problems we're gonna have when it comes to this board as far as. Trying to make a decision.
You know, I think that that's a struggle with any rulemaking, like how, how prescriptive, how descriptive can it be to the point where? It becomes non-functional because it attempted to describe every case. I, I give, as the rules coordinator, I. I get that tension every rulemaking that I advise the department on. And I think it's a fair critique of. Of legislation that talks about reasonable or consistent. You know, when I hear the word, when I read the word reasonable, my mind immediately goes to first year of law school, facts and circumstances of each case. Uh, and I don't wanna in, intrude too much into what that reasonableness determination is.
It'll be interesting to see what the, uh, public comment is for this, because that might, you know, help clarify some things, I think, maybe.
I, I think that, you know, having the field review of public comments is gonna be crucial for this board on this particular rule.
Is there any more discussion? Is there a motion? Second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Oops, sorry, okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
And chapter seventy seven, um. My colleague who you just met this morning, Rachel Vasevich, is going to be the, the, the project manager of this room making, so she will present this room making to the board.
Um, so this is a recommendation of notice to give intended action to amend the rules provided in chapter seventy seven. Um, which relate to teacher intern prep programs, um, specifically. Items one, two, and three, or items one, three, and four, excuse me. Um, increased number of endorsements available through intern programs.
Um, this will provide about right now from thirty endorsements available to about fifty-five, which is great for shortages. It also aligns to a similar change that the BOEE just made in its rules. Um, and then item two, really just amend the language, match the language provided in chapter seventy which relate to our traditional prep programs. Um, and I have Maryam, um, I'm sorry, Rodz, Rodzabo, um, to answer any questions you guys have about those amendments.
Thank you. I'm, I'm Dr. Rodzabo, um, happy to answer any questions. Um, just a brief overview of the um, the second one that she mentioned, the P and E. Uh, those changes are already made in chapter seventy-nine. Um, this is just to be in line with that. It basically says that all the teachers get that knowledge that they need about the IEP and those individualized plans to be involved in that process. Um, and if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question, not necessarily about this, so I'll keep it short. Is there any kind of endorsement for, to address the dyslexia issue that we heard earlier?
There is, um, there is a dyslexia and, um, endorsement that was in the process of, um, the testing process. Um, the Iowa, um, what is it?
The reading research.
Reading Research Center is the one who will be also involved in approving those endorsements. It is going to be open to other schools to apply to offer that endorsement. But at this point, it was the testing process, one, one school that Iowa teaching, teaching center was able to offer that.
Do we know when it's gonna be approved, or I guess other schools will be able to, when it'll be out testing and kind of available?
IRRC have their first cohorts start this fall, I think.
Okay.
Um, and so once they have, uh, I think that their intent was after they've done this year, then they would start opening it up for other um, higher education to apply to offer the endorsement. Um, but I would have to ask if they're on track to.
Okay.
So I think that a lot depends on how it goes for the first year, first cohort. So, um, but I imagine that they'll make their deadline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions about, about this?
I would move that we give notice of intent to amend chapter seventy-seven.
It's been, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Rachel.
If everything goes as planned, crossing fingers, you will see these rules for adopted and filed that you may maybe.
That may you said?
Yes.
Okay.
The, just the idiosyncrasies of the rules calendar and this board's calendar.
Don't line up.
Be ready for March.
Okay.
So the, the next item is appeal decision. Uh, Ankeny Community School District, cab G. Um, I'm bringing this before you with a recommendation to dismiss it. Uh, because the family on it, on their open enrollment application circled no for health condition or pervasive harassment. And included a statement that they wanted their children to open enroll at Ankeny to honor their late father. So there was no evidence before the school board, the Ankeny School Board, when they were acting on this request of harassment. Um, there was um, the families stated at the hearing that they wanted to keep things private. They can keep things private, of course, that is always their decision. But they cannot rely based on this board's prior precedent to keep things private and then use them to seek open enrollment, like sort of after the fact. Uh, so the issue of harassment was disclosed for the first time on appeal to this board. Uh, and for that reason, um, he, um, the recommendation to you is to dismiss the appeal. Over the objection of the district's attorney, I took evidence uh, in the hearing about harassment, just to protect the record and to make sure that the family, uh, in case this board decided not to dismiss. Uh, I held a hearing on the merits of the case. Were, were I to reach the merits, I would recommend that the, the decision be affirmed because um, for one child, the, the appellant conceded, the child hadn't been harassed. For the older child, the um, evidence was the school first learned about, Bondurant Farrar, the resident district first learned about the harassment in December of twenty twenty-one. Uh, well after the filing of the open enrollment application and only a couple of weeks before the contested case hearing. And based on the evidence, again, received over the district's objection, based on the evidence, I found um, sort of belts and suspenders dismissing for lack of jurisdiction, but even if the merits were reached, the decision would be affirmed because the school was doing things. Um, the, the child conceded, they're doing a great job in response to his, his bullying harassment complaint. And so I have a hard time when the child, when the child that issue is saying the resident district is doing a good job responding to the bullying harassment complaint, finding that the Hannity standard was met. And so the, the recommendation to you is to dismiss, to dismiss the appeal. Uh, should you reach the merits, the recommendation is that you affirm.
Is there anybody speaking today?
So I've let David, uh, is, uh, Mr. Kennedy, is your computer back on? Let's see if there are other. David, are there other, are there individuals who wish to speak on this, uh, on the appeal?
Seeing anybody, sir.
All right, so neither party is intended to, uh, take advantage of their opportunity for oral argument.
Is there any discussion or any questions for Thomas?
I move that we dismiss for a lack of jurisdiction.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Just editorially and exercising my prerogative as the presiding officer, kudos to Bonnerant Farrar for responding. They responded to the uh, bullying harassment complaint that was filed December twenty twenty-one as soon as they received it. And so even though they were not a party to that, I want to publicly recognize that they, they did what would, what we would expect under the Hannity standard.
Thomas.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, Teacher of the Year.
Excited to introduce, um, the Teacher of the Year to all of you. She's, um, just arriving and ready to, um, sit down and meet all of you, but Marietta, who runs our Teacher of the Year program at the department, will, um, Sarah Russell.
Yeah, I'm not the Teacher of the Year.
Morning, everybody. It's like, wait, what?
Uh, I'm Marietta Rives, and I'm very happy to be here this morning. Um, thank you, Janelle. I'm honored to get to introduce the Teacher of the Year today and to talk just a little bit about the Teacher of the Year program in Iowa. Um, the Iowa Teacher of the Year Award was established in nineteen fifty-eight, and I know you saw some of this on your board document, but I thought I would say it out loud so it could stick in there. The, this award was, uh, created in nineteen fifty-eight and it is supported by an allocation from the legislature. Um, the award provides an opportunity for us to recognize an Iowa teacher who motivates challenges and inspires excellence. A teacher who is respected by students and peers, who takes teaching beyond textbooks and classrooms, and who is a teacher helping us to redefine education. The Teacher of the Year works with the Iowa Department of Education for, for more than a school year. Um, she's involved with state initiatives, seeks out and engages in opportunities to elevate and promote this profession. The Iowa Teacher of the Year is charged with serving as an ambassador for education and representing the voice of all educators in our state. I'm excited to introduce you to the twenty twenty-two Teacher of the Year. Sarah Russell teaches AP Human Geography and Modern U.S. History at Pleasantville High School. She's been in the classroom for nineteen years. She holds bachelor's degree in history from Lawrence University and a master's degree from Western Illinois University. I've learned about Sarah that she is an Iowan. She's a real Iowan. And she uses that foundation to teach her students what it means to be an Iowan as an individual and what it means to be an Iowan and contribute to a worldwide society. Sarah is a teacher leader in her district. Um, she serves in a variety of capacities there. She's married. And she's the mother of twin middle school boys. So her plate is full. I am happy to introduce to you Sarah Russell as the twenty twenty-two Iowa Teacher of the Year.
Uh, first of all, thank you, Marietta, for that kind introduction. And thank you to all of you for inviting me to speak here today. Um, you know what? I, I'm just gonna, I work in a human, like I'm a human Petri dish right now. I work in a high school, but just so you can all hear me more clearly, I'm gonna just remove that for a moment. So um, as I prepare to speak to all of you today, um, I was reviewing the visions and goals of this board. And as we strive to help all Iowa students be future-ready, we find ourselves, um, at a time when the future has really never felt so uncertain. Um, instead of focusing on all the ways that educating for nearly two years during a pandemic, um, has created additional challenges and struggles for our students. And it definitely has. I'm not going to minimize that. But, um, I'm also a very optimistic person. And so I'm going to start today by reflecting on how quite possibly our students are more future-ready now than they've ever been before. Uh, when we started in March of twenty twenty, as you guys know, schools started to look very different, uh, for students. And speaking from a high school perspective, our students were asked to really take ownership of their own education. When schools shut down for the remainder of the school year, our students quickly put many of the skills learned in class into immediate practice. They interacted respectfully with their classmates during online classes. They wrote professional emails to their teachers. Though sometimes I took some coaching and maybe discussions of what, you know, proper salutations to your teacher should be. It's all right, it's a learning curve. And they learned that time, uh, time management when they were given more independence and flexibility than ever before. Now, from a teacher's perspective, we also had to change the way that we instructed. Um, we had to ask our students, uh, to do things that Google or another student couldn't just easily assist, uh, assist with. They were not in our classrooms, they were at home. So we needed to make sure that what they were doing were demonstrations of, um, authentic, real world, like problem-based learning. So students being able to adapt and, uh, not only just adapt, but excel in this new style of learning shows not only what it means to be future-ready, but it also is a reflection of the work that teachers and schools have been doing to prepare our students for the future beyond high school, well before this pandemic even started. Uh, throughout my career, I've kind of always found myself at the forefront of new initiatives in education. Uh, as a second-year teacher, uh, and I started my career teaching special education for three years at Benton Community High School. Um, I was applied and was selected to take part in a three-district consortium. So it was three very rural districts. And what we were seeking to do was to address, uh, to recognize and identify and address the problems that rural districts were facing. We were trying to figure out how we could best support one another. When, uh, my husband and I moved to Eastern Iowa and I started working at Pleasant Valley High School, I again sought out those opportunities to support the new initiatives that were being put forward. So I helped to kind of usher in, I think, two of the most important initiatives we've seen recently, and that was the adoption of the Iowa core curriculum, as well as, uh, taking part in the teacher leadership system, which Marietta mentioned. So I'm in my seventh year serving as part of the TLS system. I started first, first as an instructional lead for my department. And now I serve in a position that I, our district has, and I don't know if all districts have, called a building lead. So I work from, I work with, uh, three other teachers in my building, and we take more of a, a macro approach to what our building needs specifically in planning professional, uh, development. Um, I really love learning and trying new things, as I think a lot of teachers do. Um, I'm also a bit of a planner, and so sometimes, you know, I like to kind of know what's coming. But I think more than anything else, I see myself as having a growth mindset. And so I feel like that's why I've kind of continually put myself into these kind of unknown situations. And I really enjoy helping guide my colleagues as we've kind of launched these new initiatives. And, you know, change is hard. I mean, there's a reason we call it our comfort zones, but I also firmly believe that without change, we don't really grow as individuals. And it's important that we always continue to grow. Um, you know, just as this board has emphasized the importance of teacher preparation, I believe that preparation comes, uh, during our first couple of years in service as teachers too. So I welcome pre-service teachers, um, and served as, you know, cooperating teachers to many of those college students. But I also take a lot of pride in serving as a mentor to new teachers and have done that throughout my career. And so I feel like through both mentoring and the TLS program, we really are, you know, helping to ensure that we are able to retain these high-quality educators in Iowa. One goal that I've also continually, continually worked towards that I share with the board is creating a safe, healthy, and welcoming learning environment. In my own classroom, I do this through relationship building and also having students create, uh, classroom norms. This isn't something that I give to them. This is an exercise we go through where they create these norms that are really based around, how do we interact and treat one another? Um, I helped to co-found not only a faculty diversity group at our school, but also a student group called a Positive Place. And that group, the whole objective is that they strive to make our high school uh, more welcome, welcoming and inclusive of all students. Um, in fact, I spent my last hour and a half at school yesterday with that group. We always plan meetings that we think will go for forty-five minutes after school and then it's not us, I swear, it's not the teachers, it's the students because they're so passionate about the work and they wanted to set goals for what we still wanted to accomplish this school year. And so as the vision of this board states, we want all Iowa students to be successful participants in a global community. But for many Iowa students, a global community will look very different from the town in which they were raised. It is the job of schools to help students recognize that our differences make us stronger and help to foster new ideas and innovation. So being able to see an issue from a different perspective also really helps us to sharpen our own understanding. Schools and teachers have long been and continue to be the foundation of American society. This has been no more evident than during these past two years. When other segments of society came to a grinding halt because of the pandemic, schools found a way to not only continue educating America's youth, but also providing needed essentials, like a hot meal or a human connection, even if it was through a screen. Teachers, as they always do, found a way to meet the new challenges presented and help students succeed in unprecedented times. And despite this ability to persevere, um, I do see that our teachers and our students are struggling. It's something that I see every day. You know, I've been asked so many times since I was given this wonderful award, uh, why I became a teacher. But if I'm gonna be honest, I think a different question is much more important these days, and that is why do I continue to be a teacher? Um, and I'll be honest, in many ways, that's an easier question for me to answer. Um, I continue to teach and I still absolutely love it. Drive to school with a smile on my face every day. Um, because even when times are tough or we're going through struggles, there's always something magical that happens in a school or in a classroom. You know, maybe it's the student, and this happened just a few weeks ago, but a student who hasn't been able to turn in an assignment all quarter on time. And then he walks in one day and he turns his assignment on time and he wants to make sure I know it. Or, you know, look what I got today, Mrs. Russell. Yes, finally. Um, or, you know, the student who's been struggling with the concept. And finally, you say something in class where she just gets it, and you can just visually see it on her face. Or, or the fact that students sometimes just get so excited about a learning activity that when the bell rings, they kind of all just sigh with disappointment. Like, these are like the moments that just, they keep me coming back every single day. Um, and it just gives me so much hope. However, and I didn't want to minimize this from the start, I do worry about the mental health issues of our students and what they're dealing with and facing. And maybe it's just my perception, but I feel like I've been seeing these issues on a weekly basis this school year. So, and, and new reports are showing that a lot of mental health struggles have been exacerbated by this pandemic. So as our state continues to focus on social emotional learning, I really hope to be at the forefront of this initiative as districts across the state, including my own district, work to implement the social emotional learning competencies and learning targets. But despite my concern, I do have so much hope for students, teachers, and for education in Iowa. Through the continued partnerships with businesses and higher education institutions through Future Ready Iowa, Iowa students have more opportunities ever, um, than before to become successful and productive citizens. Through the work of the task force on growing a Through the work of the task force on growing a diverse base of teachers, we also have the opportunity to grow our own teachers. And to ensure that our education system stays strong. As we strive to make our students future ready, it is important that we continue to challenge students with real world problems. And it's hard not to feel hopeful for the future when you watch students problem solve collaboratively. Disagree respectfully and come to a shared understanding with wonder in their eyes and excitement in their voices. These students want to change the world. And they truly will. Thank you so much for your time and for inviting me here today.
Anybody else have questions?
Anyone wanna ask questions?
Do you wanna answer a question?
I'm happy to answer. I really am, I'm, I was prepared to do so.
Are you talking about the mental health of, uh, students? I'm also concerned about the mental health of, of teachers and others. I'm not sure what the answer is, but. And I'm not sure. As you go about your. Your duties and your visitations this year, it's, I think you have a, a real grasp as far as. What the, this board is looking at, I'm glad that you cited what, you know, our, our goals and stuff are, and I know you'll keep those in mind, but. I'm concerned about the professionals in the building too, cuz if they're not healthy, that's gonna be a reflection of the students too.
I, I agree a hundred percent, and I know that districts across the state are trying to find ways to. Maybe find carve out a little extra time for teachers and. It's so important that, I, I believe it's so important that teachers spend that time working with other teachers. I think sometimes when we get busy and we have more, you know, especially during the last couple of years, we've been doing. We're still teaching the same classes, but it's requiring probably more. Moment, like moment to moment effort than ever before, and teaching isn't an easy profession. But it's someone, I believe, the most rewarding profession. So. You know, I do think it's important that teachers know that they have the support of their colleagues and just making sure that we have that time for teachers to work with one another. Cuz you get bogged down and I think it's easy to kind of get stuck in your classroom. And I don't think that's good for teachers' mental health either. I think it's really important that they work together and. Um, you know, as I said during my, my speech, that's why it's so important that we have, we continue strong mentoring programs. Where we're matching our new teachers, cuz I worry a lot, I worry about our veteran teachers, but I also worry about our new teachers who have come in during the last couple of years. I'm currently mentoring a teacher who's in her second year and, you know, as she and I were just talking yesterday, she said. Then this is so different than even when I student taught, because she student taught. Right before the pandemic, and then her first two years of teaching have been at a time that's very different than any other time. But I also think the T L S system has been so important for teachers helping to lift other teachers up, but also just helping with day-to-day strategies or. It's just so important for teachers to know they're not alone and that other teachers and institutions wanna support them.
So Sarah will be joining us for lunch. So just so the board is aware, and I think lunch is here, we are just a little bit ahead of schedule, but if you're comfortable, we could still. Come back at twelve fifteen, that gives us a little more time to, to eat and maybe visit while Sarah is here. That's what we're scheduled for, but I defer to the chair and the board. I think that's fine. Okay, David, we will adjourn and we will reconvene at twelve fifteen as scheduled.